Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, March twelfth of two thousand and twenty-four. Uh with me today I have Don Swanker.
Morning.
Ned Flegel, myself, Mike Steinis, are your county supervisors. Uh we have Lisa Smith, our county auditor, Bjorn, uh from I T. And Luann is uh gladly on vacation, as he said, so she's taking a few days off and so I hope she has a enjoys that. Uh Mary is here from the media. And first on our agenda today is Mr. Todd Kenny, our Jackson County engineer. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First off, a couple uh interest permits uh to the same individual, same piece of property. Uh basically, so uh two different residences can be built on a property. The one as entrance off of three hundred and seventieth street is gonna require uh hidden driveway signs both from the east and west direction. Um the other one that's gonna enter off of uh three hundred and eightieth avenue. Um it's gonna just require the hidden driveway from the north. From the south, there's an intersection there, so it's uh it's not a big concern, but from the north, we're gonna require a hidden driveway from the north.
It is three eighty at the level B?
No.
South of that?
South of it is, yes. South of it is, yes. But where the driveways are going there.
Yeah, okay.
Just out of curiosity, before we get to, is there ever a time where you recommend we don't approve this uh a driveway entrance?
If if we were gonna do that, we would, we would make a proposal for a different location, you know, to move it to a different spot, a better spot kind of thing. So we try and don't prevent somebody from accessing their property. Um we just try to move it to a more better spot for the location.
Yeah, I just don't know as we, because it seems like there, I don't know what the ratio of, you know, hidden entrances, you know, if we say it's okay, it's a hidden entrance, put a sign up and they're still erect. Because we allowed it, are we liable or?
I don't know, that'd be a legal question. Uh I would say, as long as we do our due diligence, I I don't, I we would, I would say we've, we've mitigated our liability, you know, if we would, if we approve an entrance and and didn't do a hidden driveway or something like that, then I would say, you know, we would have increased liability, but as long as we do our due diligence, we can control how people access our road to to get to their property, but I I think we also have legal issues if we deny somebody access to the property.
Okay. Well, I would guess to venture to say, Todd, that if there's a site distance issue, it's usually four hundred instead of five hundred, it's not a hundred, you know, then you would look for a different.
Yeah, there's a reduced uh, there's a reduced site distance, but you know, like some of the, the way the road is constructed, uh the alignment, where the property sits, they're just not gonna be real good spots to to access, and you're just gonna have to uh provide the safest access and signage, and that's the only way you're gonna access it.
Good. We doing both of these at once, or you need them separately? A motion approval?
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second to approve the uh residential entrance permit to Jeff Junk, uh Tatum Moore, section fourteen in the north side. Uh also to Jeffrey Junk and Tatum Moore, section fourteen, residential entrance on the west side of three hundred and eighth cap. All those in favor say aye. I oppose.
I just like the name of that, so. That should.
Tatum Moore.
It's unusual.
Is that, is that the correct spelling? Can you, can you?
I I hear it pronounced a couple of different ways, but uh, all right, moving on. So we talked about this a little bit uh a couple of board meetings ago, but uh so the uh standing corn and windbreak uh policy. Uh so there's the policy, it's basically a two-page document, and then there's an agreement for each different type of windbreak. One is for uh standing corn and one is for bales or snow fencing. So for the corn, standing corn, um we fell onto a two hundred bushel per acre and a dollar fifty over the uh local cropper's price on August first. So that's where we're at with that. And then the uh the installation of snow fence, either with actual fence or bales, uh we fell on a uh uh reimbursement of a dollar fifty per linear foot. So that's that's the kind of meat and potatoes of it, but the agreement kind of spells out when they're gonna get paid, how they're gonna get paid. They need to sign it, we'll sign it, but we choose the sites, you know, we have control over how many of these we're gonna.
You could, you coordinate where it's gonna be placed, X amount of feet from the roadway and and that's it.
Yep, that's kind of stipulated in the policy as well. And John Keys has reviewed it and didn't have any issue with it too, so.
No, I think it'd be a great, I mean, I think it's a good option for somebody, obviously lives in an area and they know where the problem child is too, you know, so. Um if they wanna help themselves and get paid for a little bit, um.
Well, again, we control.
Sure.
It's not the property owner coming to us, say, hey, I had three hundred foot of bales put out here, I want, you know, I want to pay four hundred and fifty bucks, well, no.
You have to agree to where. Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Just the windbreak one?
Yep.
Let's start it.
Have a motion in a second to approve the windbreak policy as written. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried. Um so we have two of them listed on our agenda, or three of them. So one was a standing corn, I think we probably included that all in that one, is that correct?
So there's a policy for this at first, and then there's the two agreements.
The two agreements, one for the standing corn.
Okay, so we just approved the policy.
Yeah.
Oh, approve the standing agreement for windbreak, standing corn, windbreak agreement, a motion.
A second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the standing corn windbreak agreement as written, all those in favor say aye. I oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement for the bail or fencing.
Second, to approve the Jackson County windbreak agreement as presented for either bales or fencing. As presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, uh and see, us, uh February twenty-fourth, I sent you a draft of the uh CPKC proposed W access road public concerns based on the meeting. I wanted you guys to review that and see if there's anything else you wanted to add. Uh cuz the the direction we were gonna take is come up with these, send them formally to uh CPKC and say, can you address these? Uh and then hopefully they would, we could set up a meet, face-to-face meet with them, but we wanted to get our concerns to them in writing ahead of time, give them a chance to review those and come up with their responses, and then hopefully have a, an actual onsite meeting with them. So I just need to know, do you have anything else you wanna?
Well, you know, so there's concerns, so a lot of concern there. I mean, one is the property owner right where the crosses the tracks, of course, where they are gonna elevate that road. Um that's a concern. But my other concern is, it really doesn't do, what I can see, it doesn't do anything for emergency or any other vehicles to get down that road to the south. They're not addressing the low spot in that road where the, where the uh covert is uh to the south of it. Um so are they saying, we're just gonna give you access to cross that road there, and whatever happens after that's tough luck, cuz that's private road? Uh, you know, I guess I hate.
I can't answer that, cuz that's their question, so.
That's my question too, because it appears that we had mentioned to this time and time again, even to the, when they, we had the meeting in Bellevue. You know, if you're gonna go down that road with large fire trucks or, God forbid, but an ambulance or whatever, um you gotta, during flood season, you're gonna have to have access, and during flood season, you are not. So if there's a train blocking the other um entrance of Smith's Ferry, we still don't have access to the south side of Smith's Ferry. And again, maybe they don't care because it's a private road, I I don't know that.
Yeah, I'm not aware of what, if there is any kind of agreement between the railroad and the private property owners there now regarding their, their twenty-four hour access, or if there is any uh stipulations for access.
So I I guess my thought is, why would we wanna take maintenance of that road?
Well, if you recall, it was because of so.
If you recall, we first voted it down.
Yeah.
Already voted this down.
And then we got some concerns about, well, if we, cuz I just got an email from somebody, and I think it's sort of, you were part of it, is that they were kind of holding the uh quiet zone, Karen, in front of us, if we would, if we would willing to take the road over, then they'd be willing to establish a quiet zone, and I still think that is uh.
They can build a road all day long, we don't have to grant them access to the to our road.
That's correct. So so the 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 deal was, the the railroad and some of the, some property owner down there were trying to, I guess, play the, the quiet zone establishment card in order for us to take the road over. If that's not a, if you guys are adamant about not taking the road over, then this conversation becomes pretty short.
That's right, I and I agree with you, I I I'm, I I don't think it's a good trade. I I would take your opinion um what your thoughts are, but I I don't think it's a good trade.
Well, I think, going back to what Ned said, we already told him no once, so uh um we, I think we revisited it because there was political pressure about the, the quiet zone, so if that's something you're you're, you're weighing heavily more that we don't wanna take this road over versus, you know, establishing a quiet zone, then we, then we stay with what we.
When I came back, I said, the one thing I said is, if this was gonna go through, the only way I would even think about taking it over is if the road they're putting in meets county standards, and it alleviates whatever you have south of three thirty-four, three thirty-four, or whatever it is, those people have twenty-four, three sixty-five access to theirs. If what, they, they are, that's what they have right now, because they want us to kind of deadhead that road, they wanna be able to block it for extended periods, uh periods of time and deny people access on three thirty-four via this road. As long as they can guarantee the people south of three thirty-four, the same access that they have with three thirty-four, which means they would have to do that, but then you get into the water issues where if they build it up and driveway approaches, you have to alleviate all the concerns that come up with that to make it all work.
So I I think, I think maybe too, we wanna come to realization is that they're, most likely, they're gonna, they're gonna build this road regardless.
Are they gonna attach it to our road? How they gonna access our road?
The only, they'll, they'll come up, they, they'll, they could attach it to the road, uh what is that, to the nor uh west?
Three ninety-fifth.
Three ninety-fifth.
They have to apply for access.
Right, um. I don't know.
He's saying we can deny access.
I I don't know legally we can deny it, but that would be our only recourse to stop them from building this private road.
So we had talked about, of course, that property wasn't owned by them, but I see it transferred here, it was in the paper last week, so they did buy it.
Yeah, so they, I mean, my guess is they're gonna build this road regardless.
Yeah, and that's.
Whether we take it or we don't.
So my, I, my feeling on the quiet zone is that it's probably going to be up to the conductor, if it's quiet or not, I guess, it's one of them, you know, is there, is there an access there, is there a road there? Yeah, does he blow the horn? Well, if we agree, then does he know that's a quiet zone? Then he don't blow the horn, I think that's up to him either way. You know, i- if somebody aggravates him, or a different word, you know, he'd probably blow the horn all the way through there, I don't know.
Well, the reason I brought this up is because the last time we talked about it, we were gonna quantify our concerns, get them to the CPKC and let them respond and hopefully have an onsite meeting. If if what I'm hearing is that's not really the board's pleasure to do that, that that you just kind of like.
Right now, when I responded to that email, I guess I went back to Luann, I said, I just don't like the lack of communication. It is, what do we need to do? How about you talk to us, we try to figure this out, we address some concerns. You know, it, it, you know, cuz if this is basically, they get to do whatever they wanna do, then I, communication is pointless. You know, but we aren't gonna close that road, three thirty-fourth, because there's a lot of money invested down in there, people have right to their property. You know, I don't want the train to just arbitrarily sit there for a day, a week. The guy, oh, it shouldn't be more than a couple of hours, but it could be a week or, you know, it just, you know, with that first meeting I sat on, it was like in December, right before I became a supervisor, they were saying, it shouldn't be blocked for more than an hour or two, but there's the possibility it could be longer. You know?
And then they told us they could break it in fifteen minutes, well, I guess is whoever needs to break it ain't gonna get it from one end or it needs to be broken fifteen minutes, but anyway. Um, I I just have concerns, again, like, other than lack of transparency with will or communication, I have concern if they do this with, with the issues that the property owner brought up, and also access to the south of three thirty-four.
Yeah. Um so I I guess, what's our path forward? What do you wanna do?
I I guess I would respond just with an email, say, we, we would like to set up a meeting of some kind. I mean, we talked about this, as, as set up a meeting with.
That's what you're gonna do?
I think so. I mean, if we communicate face-to-face, is, you know, I mean.
Wanna try and do it on a Tuesday?
Great.
Yeah.
Whatever. Tuesday or Thursday, doesn't matter.
And then I guess I'll send what I have for concerns to this, to the, to date, based on what I sent you back in February, so.
Yeah, it's just okay, they put that private road in, we don't take it over, and they just put in a private road. And flooding, they got the, are they gonna break the train?
Yeah.
Are they gonna break the train if the road is covered on the north end because it's flooded and now EMS needs to get in there cuz somebody needs an ambulance, but they can't because the north side of that road, Smith Ferry Road, is covered? You know, that's, that, that, those are valid concerns. You know? What are the odds that it's gonna happen? What's, you know? I don't know.
But they're not gonna probably go.
That fifteen minutes can be life or death.
Yeah, I I mean.
A brick in the train even.
I, again, I don't know, and maybe this is uh needed to bring in John Keys, I don't know what the legal requirements are for how long they can block a private crossing. Uh, public crossing is different, but uh
cuz it's not.
So is that crossing, well, yeah, see, so is that crossing part of our county road, or who owns to what point of it, to the other side of the crossing, so then it's not private then, if it's, if, you know.
I'm assuming they, I'd have to look, but I'm assuming they consider it private cuz you're crossing the tracks to get to a private road.
Yeah, but if our road easement is to the other side of the tracks, then it's still our road. That's a public road. I don't care where it goes, it's still a public road.
I'll look that up, I'm sure we have great records for that.
Yeah. Like the, like the right away goes back to eighteen fifty, what?
I'm sorry, I may ramble.
It was, I jacked it up.
I'll see if I can find that out, and then maybe.
Yeah, we can set up a meeting would be great. I I I I don't know if it's a good trade off to take over the maintenance of that road, the quiet zone, that's my issue.
Make sure you respond to that email.
No, I'm gonna let you respond to that email. You've been responding.
The only email we got was from Luann.
No, I got an email.
You know? The only email I got was from Luann.
You responded to them last time, so. We're still, I mean, it's, it's basically this, as simple as we're setting up a meeting to have the conversation.
Still in undecided, yeah, but yeah, okay.
All right, thank God. And you are responding, by your cover, thanks.
Yeah, I'll take care of it, like.
Uh, any visitors or citizens with us today that would like to address the board? Hearing or seeing none. Lisa? Our county auditor, thank you.
Good morning. Well, good morning. With the absence of Luann being off, I can review the calendar if you'd like. Um, obviously, today, we've got our a meeting this morning and a work session afterwards, there is a Macocana River Water Management Authority meeting in Monticello, or down starting at five o'clock, and then and the annual meeting is at six o'clock tomorrow. I think um quite a few of us are going to Des Moines, we're traveling to Des Moines tomorrow, looks like Don's on Just Talk at nine A M.
Okay.
And, yeah, and there's a Veterans Affairs Commission meeting, if anybody would like to attend, four o'clock tomorrow afternoon in the community room downstairs. And at four thirty is the um executive board meeting for Des Moines, Dr. Mike in Des Moines, and that's the I six um meeting that Mike can attend on Thursday. Of course, since we're in Des Moines, we've got meetings all day, there also is a Mississippi Valley Workforce Business Meeting by Zoom uh for Don at eleven o'clock and at noon for anybody that wants to zoom in to the Jackson County Tourism Meeting. Um that is tomorrow at noon, Friday, then, um we're trying to wrap up our time in Des Moines for all of us, and um then Monday, it starts, like, we've got a busy Monday coming on the eighteenth. Mike has a waste authority meeting at the transfer station at one thirty. Uh, Jack and Nan have a governing board meeting uh in Davenport or by Zoom at three o'clock. It looks like it's tentative for at five thirty for Donna, Together We Build Board Meeting at six o'clock, then is the Steering Committee, Together We Build Steering Committee meeting for Nan. And for anyone that wants to attend, there is a zoning commission meeting at six o'clock, and we're back here next Tuesday. So that's the, that's the week ahead for everybody. The business that I need today is I do need a motion to approve the minutes of the March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four board proceedings, as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
So. Motion second to approve the minutes of the March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four board proceedings um as written by Auditor Smith and publication in the official newspaper. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
I need a motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of seven hundred thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-six cents.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the claims as presented, uh just any.
Lot of it was insurance, there was almost four thousand and.
Four hundred and one thousand in insurance.
Mm-hmm. Yes, and I'm sad to say that uh that's been increasing steadily, and we're talking to the tune almost of thirty percent this year, is that right?
It was, yeah, it was a hundred fifty-five thousand, it cost us more. So I think uh twenty-eight and a half percent, I think, was our, cuz we were projected at thirty percent, at thirty percent, and um they, they got us in at twenty-eight and a half. So we're thankful for that one and a half percent, but it's still a lot of money.
Uh, a lot of individuals can't get insurance, like it sounds too, so it's uh, some of this is weather-related, of course, and some is replacement costs and whatnot, but uh, anyway, that's what we're stuck with right now.
Yeah.
Hopefully it gets better. But uh, motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried.
Last week I sent you, uh at the end of last week, I sent you the, hopefully, the last and the final um lease for the Together We Build. Um, so if you have nothing to change in the lease, today I would need a motion to approve an authorized chair signature and a five-year lease between Jackson County and Together We Build, Inc. For a building at eleven oh two East Corey Street, Macocana, effective January first, two thousand and twenty-four through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight.
Oh, wow.
Second.
Motion second to approve the lease between Jackson County and Together We Build as presented, all those in favor say aye. I oppose. Motion carried.
And the other lease that I sent you is kind of a correction. Um, we had previously approved this lease, but um after further review, we noticed that there was an error in this lease. We have made those changes, so if you agree, I would need a motion to approve the lease between Jackson County and Imagine the Possibilities, Inc. For the Enter Jackson Care Facility from January first, two thousand and twenty-three through December first, two thousand and twenty-six.
Oh, wow.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the lease uh with Jackson County and Imagine the Possibilities for the care facility as presented, any further comments? Again, we changed some of the uh numbers in there as far as their rental agreement, uh they included, uh they agreed to an increase.
Yeah, we did, we did include the increase, uh that was not one of the changes we made, the change that was made was concerning the insurance.
Yeah.
So.
So. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried.
Um, we also need a motion to approve an authorized chair signature on a letter of support for the city of Macocana. They will be applying for a grant for the Macocana Fire Department, the Community Project Funding Grant.
Removed.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the letter of support to the city of Macocana, we're applying for the grant for the Macocana Fire Department. Um, all those in favor say aye. I oppose. Motion carried, and we hope they get that.
Absolutely.
I understand for a rescue truck, five hundred, over, over five hundred, I ran that.
Okay.
Seven hundred forty-seven thousand, three hundred seventy-five.
Okay.
Just.
Yeah, approximately.
Yeah.
Um, that's all that I have for the board today.
All right.
That's it.
Thank you. All right, let me think here, where are we at? At this time, we will take a brief recess. We will reconvene at this time, and we are joined by Laura Rowling, our zoning administrator, and Elizabeth Townsend, our.
Environmental Health Director.
That's what I thought, Environmental Health Director. So, and good morning to both.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
And we have discussion on a complaint on fifty-fifth street, is that correct?
We do, uh, the complaint actually came in October when there was a building being constructed across the street from this gentleman's house. Um, the time of the complaint also generated the fact, or the knowledge that we didn't, there was no zoning permit issued for the property, so we shut down that construction site until they got in compliance. Uh, did talk to the property owner about the neighbor's concerns, the neighbor across the street's concern about the glare at the time, and I hadn't heard anything back until about three weeks ago from our original complainant. And there had been nothing done to remedy the, the glare, and I have driven by there at the right time, and it's like, it is, it is blinding, to say the least. Um however, the only times in our ordinance that glare is discussed is when it comes to um in relation to airplanes and being within three miles of an airport for construction. And where it talks about effects of on, effects on neighboring properties, but only when it comes to special exceptions, home occupations, and other conditional uses. So our nuisance ordinance only mentioned, mentions it as far as airports, and then the other parts of the ordinance only mention it when it comes to special exceptions and other conditional uses.
I mean, my viewpoint on this is kind of, he hasn't used any, I mean, he's using common building materials. It's not like this is putting up glass mirrors to purposely shine at a neighbor's residence or something like that, he's using common building materials to build this building. I don't feel that this really falls into our jurisdiction.
Okay.
Because of one, the statements you just said, and two, that he's not.
Absolutely.
Again, I I don't feel, it's just, if you, if you do this because of a building, well, then at a certain time of day, if it's five minutes or if it's an hour, whatever it may be, I think you just open a whole can of worms to yourself and the whole aspect of either any building or any piece of property or a windshield or whatever it may be, that's glaring.
Panels.
Solar panels, yeah, there's a lot of, I just think it's a I I sympathize with them if they can't enjoy their property for a short period, but uh, I don't see it being. Do we need action on this?
I would say yes, please, uh for the fact that I'm gonna need to call him and tell him that we're not gonna follow through.
So the motion would be to deny uh the nuisance or to, the nuisance.
Well, I don't know how you deny something because it's not even aggressive.
To deny the complaint because it doesn't fall into our nuisance ordinance.
Yeah, because basically deny it, cuz, yeah, there's nothing to no ordinance to follow.
Make a motion to deny the complaint because there's no, doesn't fall under our nuisance ordinance.
Second.
Motion second to deny the complaint on fifty-fifth street as presented, all those in favor say aye.
All right.
I oppose. Motion carried.
Okay, the second one, um you guys received a letter from Cory Dobson, who is a Green Island resident. And uh he, he and I had talked on the phone, um I did call him from, from this phone, so Luann could hear the conversation. Uh, because when he brought this in, it says he wants to come before you. Well, I wanted to make sure that's what he wanted to do, and you know, set up a time where he, he could come in before you guys. And then he's like, no, I don't need to come before them, and I says, well, your letter says you did uh want to come before them, but.
I'm sorry, can we uh just renew the, what the violation or nuisance violation was?
On his, there's a abandoned mobile home, some truck cabs for their pulling truck or some other type of recreational use. recreational use vehicle. Uh, there's some chassis. There's wood piles. There's one other unregistered vehicle and tires, that type of stuff. So uh, but he didn't, at one point, he didn't think his truck cabs had some of the other items were nuisances and he wanted to appeal it.
So they're not using this property for a business, is that correct?
Correct, it is their home.
And this is not the historic bus property?
This is not. So uh, but anyway, I just wanted to tell you that he and I have talked. The letter, he does not want to come see you guys. He has made made um he has made mo- movement on getting some of the nuisance things moved, so I just wanted to let you know.
Progress.
We'll see.
Okay, so again, we've 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 done these nuisance complaint and it's been filed.
Yep.
And then if he's gonna ask for an extension, he needs to bring it to us.
No, he has.
And if he isn't making any progress, then we follow through with our policy procedure.
Right, and you you guys changed that, so if they're making progress, I can grant those thirty days kind of extensions, so we will. Uh, he's he's gonna be making some progress and then, but the mobile home's gonna take a little while, but if I can see he's picking at it.
That's what we want.
Yeah.
So what do we need for this?
I just wanted to bring it to your attention that. Yeah, he does not need to see you guys. All right, and I think I know why John's here and um we, with the information that we were able to receive from John Brackey, we're not gonna be able to move forward with the request of talk to you about that action on real estate, so there wouldn't be any need to go into closed session.
Okay.
However, we do have some, wanted to talk about some other nuisance violations and how it pertains to Elizabeth and I and we need to develop some policy on some of these abandoned uh unlivable or houses that aren't being lived in that have those type of nuisance violations, but on top of it, there's there's health septic sewer violations with them. So it's something we need to talk about as as a whole uh collectively about how to go forward and not just let these some of these properties keep existing and transferring to additional people and keep declining.
Okay. So um, so I guess are we discussing what we might have in our policy or procedure, or what are we discussing at this point?
We don't still, my thought that Lori and I are both kind of on a freeze with um, I guess rewriting our ordinances all for different reasons, but um I think we should put some sort of a resolution in place to temporarily um allow us to take action on some of these abandoned dwellings that can no longer be a dwelling because they don't have means for a septic system. Um, or a well, or if they do have a well, it's a spring box which is usually full of bacteria because it's surface water coming in from a spring. Um, so if we could put something in place allowing us to condemn a home and have it removed essentially because it's not livable anymore, you know, and Lori and I.
No, I I'm sorry, Elizabeth, to interrupt, but uh it let's first say, for instance, this is a structure and it's an abandoned living structure, so not living there. But it is solid yet per se. I mean, there, okay. So there's a question mark, a fine line to say, if this is a good storage building, I could use it for storage. Or if to say it's it's dilapidated to the point that is falling down or yeah, I guess there's a fine line there for me for that. Uh, and I don't know if other counties have that in place. Other other municipalities or anything to that effect, to have us residents to say you need to remove that.
We we need to back up. For our our zoning ordinance, you have to have a principal use structure. So a house before you can have a secondary use structure. And uh it'd be a residence, something you're living in, so using that building for storage does not fall into the purview of our of our current ordinance. So um some of the properties we're talking about have turned into storage of refuse of of neighbors that's just throw.
So one of the buildings is, one of the buildings in Green Island is being used for storage. It's a house that's really not habitable anymore. Um.
And you've been in it.
Not that one. There was another one that was, it was brought to the attention to the Board of Health a couple of years ago when we did a water study down there. We couldn't find the means for a sewer system for this house that was listed, had been listed for quite some time. I went into the home to do a water test and almost fell through the floor because it's been sitting empty and not really maintained and um, so I've been in that one and then there's the oldest.
Well, I'm gonna ask not to get yourself in that situation.
Yeah, I don't wanna go in these buildings. I don't, uh but I guess.
It's part of the job sometimes.
Well, yeah, I I understand that, but we're not gonna put ourselves in danger because of such a such a such a thing.
So so the one, so some, one of these buildings is being used by a neighbor to store their personal belongings in. Okay, but the other two are just sitting empty. Um, and then.
Okay, so I guess, sure. I just, I would like, I would certainly like to see a a draft of a policy or procedure to that effect to say, yeah, this makes sense to me. I mean, it makes sense that we don't want dilapidated, unsafe condition, be it be it um sickness or health or.
I know Macocana has a dangerous building ordinance. You might look at that to see if that's a a rough starting point.
And again, we don't want her to wield, but if other counties have something in place, we can certainly.
Right, because we the the county doesn't have a building inspector, like I know the city does, but you know, there's things that I've done with my department where you know, somebody wanted to keep something like their well or their septic, after I said, well, you know, it's probably gotta go. At their expense, they can hire in somebody to do that inspection to prove me wrong, so I think that we could do something similar with it.
Sure.
Just say, hey, at your expense, you need to hire a building ex- um inspector and prove to us that the building is safe. And you know, as long as there's not animals getting in, trees growing through it and the windows aren't broken out and, you know, just looks unsightly.
I mean, we we wanna watch that line of just because maybe we wouldn't live in it, doesn't mean somebody else would not choose to do that.
Right.
You know.
Yeah, it can be an older home and it can be, I mean, we, it can be an older home, but it should be maintained to, you know, where there's not, where it's not a nuisance or a health hazard.
Right.
I guess that's the key word is a health hazard.
Right.
You know, so obviously if there's no windows in it and it's not habitable, so.
Right, or people are breaking into it. Doing things that, which we know is.
Which is dangerous, and yeah, and so. Yeah, I would certainly be welcome to see a draft of this policy or procedure or ordinance or whatever you wanna call it.
Is this what you're talking about, gonna be a vacant or empty abandoned places? Because uh there's a line that you know, there's people that live in stuff that other people won't, but we don't arbitrarily have the right without just cause going in to a a place, so.
Right, so these are, so I think there's a difference between somebody living in it and somebody not. But then like with some of these buildings we're talking about, they can't live in them because there's no means for a sewer system or a septic or anything, so they're not, they they can't live there.
So they're identified as, yeah, non-livable.
Right.
No, we were certainly, I think, welcome to a draft or looking over and yeah, I don't know, John, you have anything to add or?
Yeah, I think the line, I think the supervisor's correctly identified the line. The line is between uh letting people do what they want as long as it's not bothering other people, which is generally the line I'd take. And keeping our county safe and secure and obeying the zoning laws so that we have future buildings that are healthy and safe and we work with the zoning office on that, so I I think you're taking the right path.
Okay.
All right.
So we can move forward with that and.
All right, John will probably need some help with that.
Sure. That's what we're here for.
I know. Anything else? You guys, no, we're good. Did you need to talk about anything else in Green Island?
Don't think so.
Okay, all right.
We talked on the phone yesterday or one day was it?
You and I?
Yeah. I'll stop down after.
By the bridge. Thank you.
Thanks, have a good day.
Thank you, appreciate your time. John.
You can say that two ways. You can say it ladies. See, I'm trying to educate people.
Be in a wrong way.
And a proper verbal agreement. That was.
Good morning.
Great, uh, ladies and gentlemen. Um, I just wanted to update you on some old business that we've been dealing with. The um buyers of that real estate that's next to the jail, I wanna say it's lot one sixty four, one thirty-four, anyway, we know the lot we're talking about, A.J. Steagall. They've agreed to our right of first refusal. I am preparing that document. I'm also gonna modify the waiver so it incorporates that we're giving this waiver in consideration for the grant of that right of first refusal from the buyer. Cool, so will we, you'll be able to execute both documents?
Okay, um, uh, and again, we have, I have a question on this, so maybe I, maybe I, maybe you answered it and I didn't gather that information. So there's an offer on that property.
Yeah.
We have the first right of refusal to that property.
We do.
At the current off. Now, we we have the opportunity to review that offer. There's a lot of contingency, a lot of terms in there. So if they renegotiate a price, do we still have the first right of refusal after negotiation?
Yes, that's how right, that's how it works. And I actually modified their waiver to incorporate that at the current terms. I I added that line. Um, that's what it means. Um, now, there's there's gonna be what we call the minimalist changes. There'll be, you know, maybe they'll agree to cede it or something like that, things that aren't significant. But any significant change uh in the terms of the agreement, of course, they would again have to say, okay, we dropped the price. Or um you know, we we're not buying this parcel. Then they would have to come back and say, okay, here, would you pass on this agreement?
Yeah, I I that's what I was getting at, you know, I mean, there's a lot, again, contingency and terms in that offer that, you know, go back to, obviously, they need to have answered before you've purchased for that kind of number. So if it's an environmental study or whatever it may be, um, I guess we have the right at that time to say, if they negotiate because of, okay, but we still have the opportunity to purchase that property at a negotiated, new negotiating price.
Right, if there's any changes in the terms, it's my understanding that there aren't gonna be any that it's both parties have a pretty good idea of what they're buying and selling and it's probably gonna go forward.
Yeah.
And I also heard from someone that they're gonna be putting up the receipts.
I didn't hear that. You mean on.
That's what I heard.
On on the back side of it, you mean, on the, I would call the east side. I don't know if there's room in the front, correct? In front of the office area?
Again, this is just I just talked to a lot of people here a lot.
Well, and again, i- if it passes through zoning, every city, it's in the city, correct?
Exactly.
So if it passes city zoning, we can't really do anything about that unless we buy the property, and I don't know that it's feasible for us to buy the property.
No, and take and take gossip for what it's worth, I'm just saying that if that were the case, um, then that would surely not be incompatible with the jail. Anyway, I'm putting those two documents together and I will have them to you. Luanne's not here. I will send them down, um, they're looking over my final draft, probably in about an hour.
That's fine, just send them. Just send them to us.
Yeah, we'll do.
And Lisa. All right.
Thank you.
John, I do have a question now. I mean, we just approved the um lease agreement with the uh, together we've got our Imagine the Possibilities on the care facility. So I did review that last night again, and I didn't really see any other changes, and then I looked back a couple of years ago when we did that. But number nine, I have a question on it. Again, it refers to first right of refusal, so look at the verbage in that, make sure that's how you like this.
Number nine?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do.
It refers to um, that Imagine has a first right of refusal somehow, but it's not really.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
To uh.
I I didn't know, I never noticed it in the lease before.
If if we're gonna lease it to somebody else, they have.
No, I think it's a purchase.
Oh, I think, yeah, I think I remember reading about that.
And I I just never remember seeing it, so I went back for a couple of years ago when we renewed, it was in there again, so it's not something new. But uh, just, you know, it's just so that we got our verbage, so what you'd like to see.
I'll take a look at that. Uh, there's two schools of thoughts on rights of first refusal. Some people think it lowers the potential price because you gotta get a waiver from somebody else. Uh, other people think it's valuable because you automatically have an interest to party.
Sure.
Um, so lawyer shop talk there.
I just, you know, I just want you to be comfortable with.
All people.
Worth the verbage.
All right, all right, thank you.
Thanks for the update. All right, let's see, we've done Lori, we've done Lisa, we've done our calendar. Um, any other business before the board? Have a motion a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried, be adjourned. Thank you, have a great day.